Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience this evening. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's our Borough of Yaton Legislative Council Meeting, July 8th. Is it 18? 18. July 18, 2024. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to make an amendment to our agenda. So, asking for consideration to amend the agenda to include the appointment of an emergency management coordinator at the county level.
Madam Chair.
Vice President Roeklau.
So moved.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question. Just a brief explanation. This is a position that's required to be occupied in the county. We recently received the resignation from the position, so we need to make an appointment tonight. We do consider that an emergency situation. Otherwise, we would have had it on the agenda properly. So, thank you for your understanding of that.
Madam President, are you going to move that to DA 3 under public safety?
I am going to move it to DA 3 under public safety. And, Mr. Secretary, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, President Moreau.
President. Oh, yes, thank you.
We didn't do roll call yet.
Did we just make a motion?
Yes, yes, you're right. I'm not doing, I saw a roll call and I said, "President." So, yes.
Vice President Roeklau.
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
All right, the vote is unanimous. The motion carries. And I'd like to proceed with roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Mayor Warren Hepkins.
Present.
President Moreau.
Present.
Vice President Roeklau.
Present.
Counselor Beatty.
Present.
Counselor Trueheart.
Present.
Counselor Pete.
Present.
Counselor Trent.
Present.
Counselor Johnson. You have Kilkeny Law or Solicitor.
Sean Kilkeny is here and my colleague Brianna Bryant.
Finance Director, Mr. Nafis Nichols.
Present.
Tax Collector, Yolanda Hughes.
Present.
And Panoni Engineering.
Present.
Welcome back, Megan. Does that conclude roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much. The gentleman that you heard speaking this evening is Mr. Rafi Cave. Mr. Rafi Cave is our new Borough Manager. He has significant managerial experience, has served on our school board and as a member of this council. He is a long-time Yaton resident and a steadfast community servant. We look forward to having him steering this ship as we continue to move Yaton forward. So, welcome, Mr. Cave officially.
Thank you. Thank you, Megan.
As for this meeting, I'd like to remind everyone to please be respectful and not to shout from the audience. As Council President, it's my duty to keep order in this legislative session, and that will not be achieved with constant disruptions. Doing so will result in you being asked to leave the meeting. In this meeting, the Chair should always ensure that the debate remains focused and not on the personalities of the members of the body. Debate on policy is healthy. Debate on personalities is not. In maintaining order, the Chair is permitted to cut off discussions that are too personal, too loud, or too crude. If dismissed, you are welcome to join us remotely, as we have restored Zoom access to the community since we took office in January. We have been collaborative, civil, and respectful of one another for months, and will continue to do so. Please note, you will need to complete a form to speak during Citizens Forum, and will have three minutes to speak. As for our Yaton Community Park, it has been brought to our attention that there are days when the parking lot for Yaton Community Park was not unlocked. We aren't perfect, but we are committed to progress. We respect and support access to Yaton Community Park for all individuals. We evaluated our system and made changes to improve communication and success. It may take some time, but we will get it right. During this week, the responsibility, during the week, the responsibility lies mostly with our Public Works Department, and you can call the Borough if you notice it locked during open hours. Our police officers are responsible in the evenings and on weekends and can be reached by dialing 911 if the lot is inaccessible during open hours. At Counselor Roeklau's very successful chat and chew, we were made aware that on at least two instances, there were emergency situations that distracted our dedicated officers from their duty. I suggested a dunk tank for anyone who missed their assignment, but in this summer heat, it was welcomed with open arms. So, we'll need to find an alternative means of discipline. We sincerely apologize for any inconvenience that this has caused. Next, we will move on to our Citizens Forum, and we do have one forum. Anna, can I have you come up and say and spell your name for the record and just verify that you are a resident of Yaton?
I'm not spelling my last name on video. If they want to turn it off, then I'm not spelling my last name on video.
So, I do believe that that's a requirement of our Citizens Forum?
We have to spell our name on video.
Yes.
So, if I look at all the passwords on my dispo, that has been required, and that's been done because, and so if you're in the comments that I have conversation, I would appreciate that, and then we can come back to this, because there's more demand than what is being presented here.
Do you have an opportunity to comment for three minutes? We would just ask that you state your name and verify that you're a citizen of Yaton.
My name is Ana DeLisandro Antonio, and I am a resident of Yaton. I've been a resident of Yaton for quite some time. The main thing that I wanted to talk about was with regards to the towing contract. There was a request for a proposal that was released May 17 of 2024. That gave 12 stipulations with regards to the scope of work. It seemed very detailed. It also gave criteria for evaluating how the proposals were going to be evaluated. There was 11 detailed bullets with regards to if you could provide service for 365 days, 24/7 availability, safe and secure, fenced, jarred, proof of company policies regarding background checks, proof of training for all their drivers, proof of insurance with regards to dollar amounts, proof of business not subject to code penalties, proof of not subject to criminal and civil penalties. It seemed very detailed. It also stated that those were the criteria that the proposals were going to be evaluated on. Now, on our menu or agenda, it says that there needs to be additional specifications. So, just trying to find out, what are the additional specifications? That seems like a reasonable question, just asking for transparency with regards to that. The other thing is with regards to the towing contract, this isn't going to cost the Borough anything. When the towing company charges, they do not charge the Borough. They charge the people that are picking up, you know, the vehicles. We also need to take into account what that cost is. Not everybody who has a car towed is a criminal. Not everybody has a car that's abandoned. Sometimes it's an accident, so we also want to take that into account. That's the main thing that I wanted to talk about. If we could get some additional information with regards to that, it would be appreciated. And then the other thing was with regards to Curf Field. We're not quite sure right now what is going on with Curf Field. Prior to this meeting started, the police chief said that he saw that there was a football game going on. If we could get some information with regards to that. So, they're the main things. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. The simplest answer would be that last month, we passed a booting ordinance, and this RFP was released in May. So, the information pertaining to the booting ordinance was not added to the RFP. So, we did have to amend the RFP to include information regarding the services required to support our booting ordinance, but thank you for that. Next, we will move on to our minutes. Up for consideration are the June 20, 2024 Legislative Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Having been moved and seconded on the question. Hearing none, please continue with the roll call vote.
President Moreau.
Yes.
Vice President Roeklau.
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Counselor Johnson. Thank you.
All right, the vote is unanimous. The motion carries. Next, we have our Mayor's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. I have three items to report briefly. First, Mayor's Form was undrumed. Fourth, we had special service awards that were presented to a number of our police officers for outstanding dedicated service, life-saving efforts, and two of those officers were featured recently, I believe, on ABC World News Tonight, and we are very proud of them, and we thank you for their service. Just wanted the public to know that we're losing two full-time officers who recently took jobs in positions, similar positions, in neighboring townships. So, effective next week, we'll be two officers down. Also, we have three retirements that we're expecting in early next year, and the Civil Service Commission will be on top of that, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And as far as the Curf Field situation is concerned, I could bring you up to date on what I know. And basically, the Willimpen School District had to pass a budget by law by July 1. They were waiting for the budget from the state to be passed, and whatever the state pass would be allocated to the various school districts throughout the Commonwealth, and there was an impasse. So, because of the impasse, they had to pass a budget with a 3% tax increase, but one of the things that was cut temporarily was the security guard arrangement for Curf Field. The state budget was finally passed on July 11, but with a shortfall of revenue than what the Willimpen School District hadn't expected. So, I have spoken to Dr. B. Coates, and he said it's still under review, and they'll let us know as soon as they can if and when the security arrangement could be reinstated so that residents could use the field again. I did ask him, short of that, if we came up with our own arrangement, if that would be amenable to the school district, and he said, "Yes, it depends," but they're open to that as well. So, we're waiting, and hopefully it shouldn't be too much longer before we give you, before they're able to give us an answer or go to Plan B. Madam President, here is my report.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you for initiating those conversations with the school district. Next, we will have our Vice President's Report, because she has a report that's much more interesting than I have, if I have to say at this point, so.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. I just wanted to say thank you to each and every one of you who attended the Town Hall a couple of weeks ago. It was very informative. Everyone felt relaxed. They felt that they received a lot of transparent information. Questions were asked and answered, and everyone was pretty much pleased with how everything turned out. So, again, we're trying to cultivate a community that is transparent with government and a community that welcomes everyone's opinions, recommendations, suggestions, and just simply engaging in everyone's thoughts on how we can move Yaton forward in a positive manner. So, thank you all, and I really enjoyed, you know, being with my community members, and I look forward to doing it again. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Vice President. And in that spirit of collaboration, I would like to report that Mr. Cave brought to our attention that there was also resident input into the revision of the RFP for the towing contract. There were, after reviewing our videos and the commentary that we received from a resident that I don't see here this evening, but is typically here, we used those recommendations to make sure it's when we went in to update the proposal. So, not for nothing, the collaboration worked. So, thank you. Next, we will move on to our Managers' Report. Mr. Cave.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. First, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for trusting me in this role. It's not something I take lightly. It means a lot to me to represent this borough as a resident, a very longtime resident. I consider myself a servant of the borough, a servant of the people, and I really appreciate your trust. Madam President and this council has charged me with a few things: increasing accountability, increasing transparency, increasing efficiency, which means lower costs to Borough residents and Borough taxpayers. Those are all very important to me, and I have aggressively, in the first couple of weeks in this role, I've aggressively analyzed kind of all these parameters. Over the next couple of weeks, next couple of months, you will see the fruition of a lot of that hard work. We've met with almost all employees, just one department that we still need to meet with, and I am very excited. I am open to any collaboration, any conversations. I know sometimes these three minutes in these settings can seem a little short, but President Moreau also wants to hear what you have to say. So, feel free to reach out to me. Let's schedule a time to talk and hear your concerns. Call me. I'm here every single day, and I'm open to you. So, once again, I appreciate you, and let's get to work.
I appreciate your work.
One less head. All right, Mr. Cave, I see you have some things up for consideration.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, I would like a consideration for the appointment of Mr. Kyle Womack to the position of Director of Code Enforcement at the salary of $65,000, effective July 29, 2024.
All right. Madam Chair. Madam Vice President.
I would like to make a motion for the appointment of Kyle Womack to the position of Director of Code Enforcement at the salary of $65,000, effective July 29, 2024.
Having been moved and properly seconded, given this is a personnel matter, we will refrain from questions and move on to our vote.
President Moreau.
Yes.
Vice President Roeklau.
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart.
I must have stayed.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
All right, that vote is mostly unanimous, and given the smile on Counselor Trueheart's face, I don't believe that there's a true objection there, but thank you for your transparency. Is Mr. Womack here this evening?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to take a moment to address our community, Mr. Womack?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank the council for not only considering, but also agreeing to have me take over as the Director of Code Enforcement into the community. I am a lifelong Yaton Borough resident. I am a product of the Willimpen School District, kindergarten through 12th grade, born in Mercy Fitzgerald down the street. So, this is more than a job to me. This is not a dream job, but this is sort of a dream on a professional level. I've worked in Yaton Borough for the past two and a half years under the Delaware County Health Department. I've inspected every, you know, restaurant and facility in Yaton Borough. During that job, I had the pleasure of taking complaints from Yaton residents as the inspector, you know, in this community. It was during that time that I realized that the residents of this borough had the same passion for this borough that I have. On a few of those complaints, I had to come into the Borough Hall. Every time I came into this building, it kind of felt like home, and I knew it was a place that I wanted to be at. So, when the opportunity presented itself for me to actually come here on a professional level, on a full-time term, you know, I jumped at it, and I again want to thank you all, and I look forward to this, and this is something that I will take extremely serious, and not only continuing the beauty of this community, but also enhancing it through, you know, proper code enforcement, and that's what I think I was put here to do, and I would like to thank you all again.
Thank you. Welcome to the team.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm seeking a consideration for the advertisement of ordinance number 2024-005, amending 281-51 metered parking lots.
Madam President.
Madam Vice President.
I would like to make a motion for the advertisement of ordinance number 2024-005, amending 281-51 metered parking lots.
Seconded.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question. Hearing none, I'd like to just give a few highlights of what these changes are. Some of this derived from conversation that we had at Counselor Roeklau's chat and chew, along with addressing some of the needs that our police department had, and just the overall health and well-being of the community. A few years ago, we had a very unfortunate incident happen on Church Lane, and with our resident, it happened late in the evening, and with our residents in that area in mind, we have come to the conclusion that it's probably best that we close these parking lots a bit earlier. So, there will be no parking from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM, is what the ordinance is suggesting. That'll better help our community members, you know, and our police to be able to monitor what's happening in that area. We have reports of people living in our parking lots overnight. It's much easier to know and recognize that the parking lot is empty, or only certain permitted spaces would be allowed. One of the things that our chief or manager, Vice President Roeklau, also uncovered, and was discussed by another longtime resident at the chat and chew, was that there were permits being issued for this, for the Gunther Avenue Lot, and we need to make sure that our ordinances are reflective of our activity. So, we are going to designate one-third of the spaces in that parking lot for permits, and then the remaining spaces will be the metered spaces. Those metered spaces will again close at 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and for the Myra Avenue Lot, that the only change would be the 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. We haven't changed or increased any of the parking fees, considering that they are still 25 cents an hour. Sure, anyone parking there is getting a good deal, but that wasn't the goal. The goal was to increase safety and to be able to monitor the lots a bit better. So, that's what this ordinance is for. And with that, can we take the roll call vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. President Moreau.
Yes.
Vice President Roeklau.
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Thank you.
All right, that vote is unanimous. The motion carries.
And lastly, Madam President, I'm seeking a motion for the consideration of appointment of Mr. Michael Malazo to the position of Fire Marshal, effective July 1, 2024, subject to the Solicitor's Review.
Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move for the consideration for the appointment of Michael Malazo to the position of Fire Marshal, effective July 1, 2024, subject to the Solicitor's Review.
Seconded.
All right, having been moved and properly seconded on the question, Mr. Kilkeny, can you just give a brief explanation of what the review means?
Sure. Council met previously in executive session this evening at 6:30, where we discussed personnel matters, one of which was to include this appointment, potential appointment this evening. And I'm going to work with Mr. Cave and Mr. Nichols to get some parameters as to the employment agreement related to this, what the requirements are, what educational requirements and attainment is going to be related to this, so we ratify, so both the employee and Borough Council understands the expectations of Mr. Malazo.
All right, thank you very much. This is, again, one of those positions that are required in the county, and we want to make sure that we are in compliance. Can we move forward with our roll call vote?
Madam President. I'm sorry. Ma'am, I also ask that you give clarity as to why it's effective July 1.
Yes, so my understanding is the person who previously has held this position moved on, and it was a little unexpected as far as the timing goes. So, the Council President and Mr. Cave and Mr. Nichols thought we're required to have somebody in place, so we contracted with this individual, so that's why it's a little retroactive, factidual.
So, there were some fires, and they needed a marshal, so. Slim explanation, all right. Any other? Okay. Our vote, please?
President Moreau.
Yes.
Vice President Roeklau.
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Thank you.
That vote is unanimous. The motion carries. Next, we will move on to our Solicitor's Report.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So, just so council and the public under is aware, once a month, our office meets virtually with the Council President, the Council Vice President, and senior staff, goes over exhaustively all the legal matters that are happening in Yaton, gets input both from the Borough Manager and the Council President and Vice President. So, there are many matters that are covered during this meeting, which eventually make agendas and other agendas. So, there's definitely a lot of oversight, and we work collaboratively with both council and the administration on that. So, I wanted to bring some matters to your attention. Couple of months back, you authorized us to go ahead and file a complaint in equity, very similar to the same complaint equity for 1100 to 1108 Chester Avenue, but that was for the Frankie Francis property at 1025 Purge Lane. And the reason why we had to do so is a lot of the citations that were in front of our district court were criminal in nature. When they were criminal in nature, the person that was served with that had to answer and show up at a hearing, and this Mr. Francis was refusing to do so. We were caught in this odd legal conundrum related to that. So, what we tried to do is take a different approach and file a civil action and equity in Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. So, we went ahead, we went ahead and did so. We had service effectuated by the Philadelphia Sheriff's Office through Delaware County. That complaint was then served on Mr. Francis. We filed a default notice because he didn't respond within 20 days, and he didn't respond to that default notice. So, Ms. Bryant and her office went ahead, and we're going ahead and filing a default judgment. So, that's some good news. The next procedural would be an estimation of damages. Once we have that default judgment, we'll get an estimation of damages, and then we will have a judgment against Mr. Francis. This is very similar to what's happening for 1100 and 1108 Chester Avenue. We're going through the same process, although not perfect, at least we'll have a judgment in place. We're not caught in this legal quackmire where no one's answering and kind of moving forward and hopefully putting some pressure on this. Also, want to thank the Council President for bringing to my attention, because I do not live here in Yaton, that some of these properties are subject to sheriff sale, reached out to the Chief Deputy Sheriff, who I know in another capacity, and made her aware that, you know, Yaton has pending legal action on this. Can you please tell us what's going on with these matters and made aware? So, that's a little update as far as what our office has been working on, as well as Ms. Bryant also in the last advertisement for the metered parking lots. She was working with staff and the Council President, Vice President, to get that ordinance together the last couple of days. So, those are some matters that our office has been working on, and that would conclude my report, and would ask that you make move forward on the DA, which is a consideration to authorize filing the next equity action.
All right. So, up for consideration is to authorize our solicitor to file an equity action in Delaware County Court of Common Pleas for failure to abide by the Yaton Borough Code for the property located at Code for the property located at eleven hundred to eleven oh eight Chester Avenue. Madam President. Vice President Row Cloud.
I make a motion to authorize the solicitor to file an equity action in the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas for failure to abide by the Yaden Borough Code for the property located at eleven hundred dash eleven oh eight Chester Avenue.
Seconded. Having been moved and properly seconded on the question.
Question. Now, it seems like there's still construction going on currently. Now, does that mean they're going to continue, but they might have to pay some fines?
Uh, so um, so we've been coordinating with the township engineer, Mr. The Arrows, here and so what's happening is, is I don't know if she has an update, but there's been, she's been talking to their engineer and trying to figure out what's going, yeah.
Yeah, I, I reached out to their engineer this week, I did not hear back, I'm going to follow up again with an email. Um, as far as our understanding, the application that was submitted for land development that you approved two years ago is no longer able to be approved because at the time, the building was still standing and it was just an addition and we haven't let them know that, but at the same time, I will also add on, they needed their approval from, for sanitary and they did not have that. So I am trying to get confirmation whether they have that, if they're revising plans, I do not know, I, I'm waiting to hear back and I will follow up once I have that clarification.
And Counselor Trent, who's, and we were, um, this was kind of discussed in the meeting that uh, we were, we were talking about, so probably, we're going to try to get clarification first from the engineer and if not, and you know, if they're moving forward and not authorize actions, she'll issue a cease and desist and we'll go from there uh, to try to hold their feet to the fire.
Madam Chair.
Uh, question, so um, I mean, since what they originally applied for is no longer valid, right? So what they're doing now is not valid.
It's not authorized.
It's not authorized.
One of the things is that they filed a demolition permit and that is accurate, they tend, they got approval to demolish the building because we cited them with how unsafe the buildings. So as long as all the work is associated with demolition and clearing the property, they are allowed to do that.
So if, who is actually monitoring what's happening over there? Are they still performing any type of work over there? What is actually happening at, happening at this point in time?
My understanding is that would be your code department, um, unless, we have not been asked to go to the site because it's not a land development and a demolition movement not go on site.
So we don't even know if the demolition is complete at this point in time?
What we can see from the street is that structures have been erected and that should not be a part of a demolition process.
Oh, is there?
It doesn't.
Are they adding?
There's a, there looks, it looks like there's an elevator shaft or a stairwell.
Yes, demolition hasn't been completed and now they're actually, they put some footings and they're actually, they're actually putting in.
So they should not be doing anything at this point in time, so.
I'll make, that changes my thought. I'll make that.
So, right, so a cease and desist should be.
She's telling them to stop, that's what the, that essentially means.
We'll get you the photos.
Uh, I'll.
If that's what you're lacking, we'll get you the photos.
Now, and I'll talk to, in my experience, again, your code department would issue the stop and desist, we can certainly support it with the photos and, and justification, but I'll make sure I take a look at that and go from there.
And I'll be at the site tomorrow as well.
Okay.
Okay, and then moving forward, we just have to.
And I saw, and I'll respond to your email.
Yep.
With the full summary in this one and now I'm understanding it's the, the email from yesterday, okay.
So moving forward, we're going to keep an eye out and monitor and make sure they're just not leaving debris sitting there until they get their credentials.
I'll, I'll make it a point that our code officers visited at least, at least once a day.
And, and Vice President Row Cloud, and this action here that the motion is seconded is, is talking about their past violations too, so we're holding their feet to the fire on that as well.
Okay.
Madam President, uh, Counselor Johnson asks if she can ask a question?
Yes.
Um, at this place, this is an illegal demolition, have they been fined or are more fined possible?
This is not an illegal demolition, it's the erection of footings and stairwells, that's the illegal part. So we, we'll take the appropriate action, that's what we're doing here, I believe this. Um, the equity action will, having a judgment will further support us being able to issue citations, hold them liable for the citations that they already have in place, prevent them from going forward, so we're just kind of making our hammer bigger.
Okay.
All right, um, roll call vote, please.
Yes, uh, President Moreau.
Yes.
Vice President Row Cloud.
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Thank you.
The vote is unanimous, that motion carries.
Okay. Oh, sure, um, uh, so just to be, uh, just to clarify that the address is uh, ten twenty-five Church Lane?
Ten twenty-four.
Ten twenty-four, I apologize, it's written ten twenty-five. So ten twenty-four, I apologize, the one, ten twenty-five to be alarmed.
Right, I don't believe ten twenty-five Church Lane exists, but if they do, they're not in trouble. All right, thank you so much. Um, there is your report?
Thank you.
All right, um, next we'll have our tax collectors' report.
Good evening.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Marco, can we move that, that mic closer, please?
She said she's good.
Oh, she said she's good, time. The guy in the hall said she's good, all right.
Well, first I want to thank uh, the finance director for reading my reporting to the record on last meeting in June. Uh, I do believe that there was something left out of the report according to the minute, the draft minutes that I see here. But I've, I've put it in this report as well, so it's going to be covered. I want to let the public know that there's going to be upset sales, there is an upset sales, sales schedule for September nineteenth. If you have not paid your taxes on twenty twenty-two or earlier and have not made arrangements, you have to August thirtieth to do so. You can do so by contacting the. What is?
Or no?
No.
I'm sorry.
The uh, bureau.
The Bureau.
Tax claim bureau.
Tax claim bureau.
Yeah, thank you, I lost that for a minute.
Sorry.
Yes, the tax claim bureau. Uh, for twenty twenty-four taxes that haven't been paid, you have to twelve thirty, one twenty-four to get those paid, otherwise they'll become delinquent. Delinquent taxes cannot be paid in the current tax collector's office, so you have to be paid uh, with the person who sends you the notes, which is going to be the tax claim bureau and Ecollect at this point. I'm saying, telling you that because a lot of people keep trying to bring their twenty twenty-two taxes to me, I can't, I can't take it. I have no record, no place to keep the record. I'm asking, and my third thing on the agenda for me is that I'm asking that you consider hiring an administrative assistant for the tax collector's office for knowledge and continuity. What happens is that every four years, uh, is the potential of having a new tax collector, but there's nobody around to transfer knowledge or information to the taxpayers as they need it and want it. And I think there's something you need to make sure that the borough has information even if they don't have, even if they have a new tax collector. That's my recommendation. The other thing I would like for you to consider is, I don't know what the procedure would be for considering giving discounts to seniors on their taxes, but needless to say, I've had numerous requests from the taxpayers, the senior taxpayers. Um, so how would we address that?
We offer a two percent discount for paying your taxes early.
And.
Everyone is eligible for that.
If I'm not mistaken, Madam Tax Collector, Madam President, there is a state resource for senior citizens that they can apply for some relief and which the state will offset their tax bill, um, but there's a process and I will recommend that we direct them to the state records or the state senate's office for that resource.
Okay.
And um, Madam President.
Counsel, Counselor Johnson, we have to maintain order, so please let Mr. Nichols know when you, you're wishing to be recognized, because Counselor Trueheart is speaking.
Thank you.
So Madam President and Madam Tax Collector, so um, to exactly what Mr. Nichols is saying, so I know that um, no, Joanna McClintock's office, they do regular sessions covering exactly that, so perhaps we should make sure that we're keyed into that and even suggest that maybe she do a few of them here in Yaden because they do that quite often, or since she has a staff person that is at the library regularly, then perhaps they could arrange to have a session just on that for the seniors when he's there.
Absolutely, and um, and also take advantage of that two percent early pay discount. Um, as far as a um, an assistant, I know uh, Mr. Nichols is probably, his ears are probably tingling over there, um, I believe that the, the continuity occurs with our audits and with our treasurer as, that works closely with our finance department, so uh, an assistant isn't really budgeted uh, for, for that office, but Mr. Nichols, can you speak to how the?
So my first role is really just to verify the deposits from the tax collector's office, not necessarily the posting of payments and the process and procedures for collecting taxes. Um, my understanding is years ago, someone at the front desk assisted the tax collector, many, many, many tax collectors ago. It was a part-time person who was part-time doing borough work and the other half their time they were doing tax collector work. I don't know, we can have the conversation as we have our upcoming budget meetings.
Okay.
But right now, we don't have anything budgeted in the budget to do that.
All right, thank you very much. Is that in your report?
Oh, no, it does not.
Okay.
The um, June taxes collected for June first through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, the um, real estate taxes collected was in the face amount nine, ninety-three thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars and five cents. The borough trash that was collected was twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and the borough sewer collected was thirty-six thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety cents. For a total of, with including those that it, with the penalties, was one hundred and fifty-eight thousand eighty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. That ends my report.
All right, thank you very much. Um, next we will move on to our engineers' report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have three action items and then one project update to provide tonight. Um, the first one is for approval to proceed with bidding for community park improvements. This is at Yaden Community Park, it is grant funded uh, by DCNR, Delco Greenways, and the Stormwater Collaborative, um, so all construction will be uh, covered once awarded and bid. Um, along with this project, we also are including as an alternate, the borough parking lot addition, which I believe has been hopefully passed along and uh, we provided a sketch earlier in the year and the scope of the project does align with the community park work as well, so that will be a one-way additional parking of fourteen spaces onto Redwood. Um, so at this time, I'm just asking for approval to proceed with bidding.
And when it's already made before we go, I see Mike and Crystal moved definitely like. But the purpose of adding the parking lot to the bid specs were for us to get a better bang for our buck. It would be astronomical for us to be separate to do the same work that's going to be happening over at Community Park, so this is an option to the Community Park bid so that if a bidder comes in, a contractor comes in, they look at the whole thing, the more that we're doing, the cheaper the cost will be for us. So I wanted to make that point clear.
Thank you, and it is an alternate, you will not have to do it, but you will know how much it will cost before you, you can make that decision.
Okay, um, could you give a, just a, like a bird's eye view of what community park improvements means?
Absolutely, um, it is going to include a tot lot, we are adding two new pavilions with picnic tables underneath of it, we are adding a third basketball court, we are refinishing the existing basketball courts to match the new one, we are adding benches, new grills, improving a lot of the walkway that is broken, um, and extending the um, walking path as well, along, around the corner.
Um, will, will, at, at some point, will we get like schematics or an overview of what this looks like?
Yes, um, we are working on the plans right now and I will be sending along that uh, in the next week or so, I'll send along a, a draft plan.
Okay, and with this, can, can we also consider the usage of the parking lot? Um, they're not saying that they're need, like, just the bare minimum, like the, the repainting and repositioning, because I know that what we often see is people parking along that wooden gate, but those aren't really designated spaces, so I just want to make sure from like a liability standpoint, from a maximum use standpoint, from a leaving enough room for handicap spaces standpoint, that we are utilizing our painted line space.
I apologize, I actually forgot about this, we're adding a rain garden and repaving the parking lot and restriping it with ADA parking spaces as well, so I will work with um, to make sure that if we need to provide hatching or something that people don't park or even no parking, um, to make that clear in the parking lot.
Perfect, thank you so much. Um, so up for consideration is to proceed with bidding for community park improvements now that we know what that means. Madam Chair. Vice President Row Cloud.
Motion to proceed with bidding for the community park improvement.
Seconded. Having been moved and seconded. Any additional questions? Madam Chair. Vice President Row Cloud.
Um, I just have one question, so I heard about all the wonderful improvements that's going to be included, but I didn't hear anything about any type of like water system or anything.
Do you mean drinking water or like a play structure?
Just some type of water, maybe some fountains, um.
You mean drinking water or play water?
Yeah, drinking water.
Drinking water?
Yeah.
Drinking water, so in, I've had multiple meetings with um, Roy and Public Works and we have come up with a phase three um, of the park at this point, every time we meet, there's something new that comes up, so that can certainly be added to future phases, we've already kind of put it on a potential grant list um, for application, so if that's something that we feel like is a need, I don't know if there's currently water in the park, so I, we might have to run it, but I know there were some discussions for a comfort station or possible um, other stuff, so.
Right.
We can certainly, that is, I will add that to the list.
Okay. So I guess when, while we're considering the phase three, we want to make sure that this phase wouldn't have to be undone to include that phase, so we should let the, you know, whoever's bidding and when, when we put in the RFP, that also consider, you know, leaving access so that we're not tearing up our new tot lot to get a water fountain.
Yes, we have, we, we've talked about a few different things, but we're, we're getting there, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any more questions? Hearing none, can we proceed with our roll call vote?
President Moreau.
Yes.
Vice President Row Cloud.
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, that vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Um, before we move on from the park, was the grant, was there an amount associated with the grant or is?
The, hold on, it's in this, it's in the really big one and I don't want to tell you, it's going to be five hundred or five hundred thousand.
Okay.
In that ballpark, um, but I have the exact numbers if you want to hear that. We have a hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred and fifteen from Delco Greenways, we have another two hundred and thirty thousand dollars from DCNR, and then as a third grant, we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the basketball court specifically, and then whatever the stormwater system is going to cost, the collaborative is going to pay for that because they will also get credit for that.
Oh, I heard four numbers.
I know.
They were there three or four.[1797.85]
There is one pool that is the, I know, I'm making this super confusing, and... It's two DCNR grants that we then combined, and the total of DCNR is 230,000. Then, to match that grant, because DCNR is 50%, we went out and got a Delco Greenway grant from the county, which is 175,315. While we were working on that project, there was another round of Delco Greenway grant funding, and we came in and did another application for community park for just the basketball courts, but because it's happening at the courts, we can combine all of that into one project and roll all the funding. It's going to be a nightmare on my end to close this project out and bill it properly, and I've already forewarned the treasurer that when billing comes, it's going to be a lot of fun, but all of that funding will cover what is happening in one bid and one project.
Okay, so you said 175,350?
175,350, yes.
Okay, all right, I thought those were two separate numbers.
I know, I apologize.
Got it, okay.
Makes it super confusing.
Okay, that's a lot of a grant, thank you. Your next motion?
That is for the award of the ROAD program. We received three bids. The low bid was AF Damon at 132,152.05, and that is to pave Yaden Ave from Redwood to McDade.
Okay.
McDade, thank you.
So, let's make sure it's the lowest responsible bidder.
Lowest responsible bidder, yes.
Thank you.
And that is all pending on their bonds that they have to execute as well.
Okay, so are we, can we entertain a motion?
Madam Chair.
Counselor Trueheart.
Make a motion to award the ROAD program project to AF Damon in the amount of 132,152.05.
Seconded.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question. Hearing none, can we proceed with our roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub.
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Thank you.
All right, that vote is unanimous, the motion carries. I think, I think I have the five cents if you need it. You have one more motion?
I do. That is for a grant that is due July 31st, and that is for the DCD multimodal program. It is the same program that was, that you recently got a grant for, for Church and Bailey right outside. The project we are proposing to submit an application for is for Church and Myra, so we are just moving the improvements along the corridor. It would be signal improvements as well as pedestrian improvements with ramps, crosswalks, push signals or push buttons, and just an overall intersection refresh.
Overall intersection, that, would it have like the fancy countdown?
It can, if we want to, oh, and preemption to work with the firehouse as well.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, so this is, this is something that a community member actually brought up several times here. Hakima Jabar, she's probably watching us on Zoom, but we hear you and thank you, because this is, it's great to see all of our collaboration come to fruition, so...
I do, I'm going to add one thing, that this is the last year that the municipalities are not required to provide a match either, so this will be 100% funded and request. There's no borough match required for this project.
All right, so hurry up before they change their minds.
I'm going to entertain this motion.
Vice President Roelklaub.
Motion to approve the reelection for the DCED MTF application for Church Lane and Myra Avenue intersection upgrade. Seconded.
Having been moved and seconded on the question, it's a very good explanation, no questions, can we proceed with our roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub. Counselor Trueheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Thank you.
That vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Next up, we, I'm sorry, there's one more thing you need.
I have two project updates, one quick one. As I mentioned, Church and Bailey, that was awarded for that grant, that we are getting started on that work, which will start with survey, so I just want to tell you, because it is center of town, July 25th and July 26th, we will have a survey crew out at that intersection. So, so when you see guys there all day in vests, looking like they're taking pictures, we are surveying. So, that was one update. The second one, I was asked to give an update about the intersection improvements at McDade and Church, and what we've done to date slash what is also coming. So, we are coming up on the one mark since the speed slot was put to the west of the intersection and the speed hump, I know, but pretty much the deflections on the road were put to the east of the intersection, which I've heard have helped quite a bit, hopefully. So, that was done in September of last year, and then recently, at last month's meeting, the project was awarded for the signal and pedestrian improvements, as well as McDade One Way from Church to West Cobbs. That contract has been awarded, and they are sitting actually with the manager to be executed. Once those contracts are executed, we will have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor. I will tell you right now, as much as I want to tell you, this will be done by the end of the year. Mast arms alone take six to eight to nine months to make and produce, so depending upon the timeline for that, which we should have, once we have a pre-construction meeting, we will keep you updated on when construction for that intersection will start.
Perhaps you could show them the car on the porch of the house, and maybe we can get that cut down a little bit.
We have already had conversations, and I know that they have started to get fabrication and shop drawings into us, but again, we won't do anything until contracts are executed just for legal purposes, so...
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. All right, next on our reports, we have our finance report.
Madam President, I'm just asking for consideration of the AP list for July 24th.
Madam President.
Mr. Pete.
May I put a motion on the floor to consider the accounts payable list for July 2024?
Thank you, Counselor Pete is there, seconded. Having been moved and seconded on the question. Counselor Roelklaub.
Just one question. I've been noticing a lot of refunds for overpayments of real estate taxes, and I was just wondering, is there some way we can kind of like cut down on that? I don't know what's happening for us to get overpaid, but...
So, I can say, well, I mean, with the tax, it was a very soon, sometimes some residents pay, some residents will have their mortgage company pay their real estate tax bill, and if they don't, if they receive it in their house or they don't see their receipt or something, then they come and pay it, so that they won't miss out on a discount or have a penalty or be up for sheriff's sale. So, that's one scenario. Another scenario could be that there was a reassessment of a property, and we have to refund some dollars back based on that reassessment, because a court order could have come in, and it may have lingered for a while. Madam Tax Collector, I don't know if there's any other...
Yeah, there's a third one, there's a third one, the military exemption. People apply for military exemption, if you're 100% military disabled, and you get a letter from the VA, and then you get a letter from the milita, veterans of military of Pennsylvania, then they get, they either get, they don't have to pay their real estate tax, they still have to pay their sewer and trash, but they have to only pay it, they only get the discount of reduction of that based on the year, the date of the letter that they got the exemption approved. So, they come along, I have two more that's going to come out, that's kind of going to be submitted next week, because they got me their military letter that says that they're 100% military disabled.
The short answer is...
Again, the manager and I are going to be meeting with Madam Tax Collector next week, so that we can see how we can, you know, streamline some of that stuff.
Okay, thanks. It does happen, I did it once.
Right.
No, I understand it happens, but, you know, when you see a lot, and it's continuous, it's like, why is it happening so much?
Right, okay, any other questions? Hearing none, can we proceed with the roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub.
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Thank you.
That vote is unanimous, the motion carries.
Madam President, consideration of the approval. The AP additions list for the month of July.
So...
Having been moved and properly seconded, any questions on the additions? Hearing none, can we proceed with our roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub.
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Thank you.
All right.
Madam President, consideration for the June cash balance report.
Madam President, I make a motion for consideration of the June cash balance report.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, any questions? Hearing none, can we proceed with the roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub.
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Thank you.
That vote is unanimous, the motion carries.
And lastly, Madam President, consideration for the approval to sell the borough's delinquent 2024 real estate taxes. The process normally starts about this time, so that the DMA is Pennsylvania...
Asset management.
Oh, I'm sorry, public asset, that's another DMA, public asset management corporation can start that process. We do this every year, and it's a way for the borough to receive a lump sum of delinquent real estate taxes versus us waiting over a period of time for individual taxpayers to pay Delaware County, and the dollars trickle in.
Madam President. Vice President Roelklaub.
I make a motion for the approval to sell the 2024 borough delinquent real estate taxes to public asset management.
Second.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question. Is this the same company that we've used before?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we proceed with the roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub.
Yes.
Counselor Trueheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Thank you.
That vote is unanimous, the motion carries. You couldn't say that fast enough. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Ordinance zoning? No? All right, Public Works.
You know, I can read the, I'm sorry, the code report.
Okay, thank you.
If you'd like.
By read, you mean provide a brief synopsis?
Yes.
All right.
Somewhere around, I hear this. Our, just know, some of our code officials, now we have one here, some of our code officials are also firefighters, and they have their meeting this afternoon as well. Just going to reread some of the items that were listed at the, at the code meeting last week. Some of the hotspots noted, 1219 South Longacre, 1024 Church, of course, 725 Fern Street, 814 Longacre. Some action items that were in the solicitors' report, 11110 A Chester Avenue, Washington Woods Apartments, they have a new property maintenance company, inspectors met with them to advise on the need to clean up after several abatement efforts. 404 Industrial Drive, Philly's Best Stakes, looking forward to that. Permits have been issued by the commercial BCO. Some fire-related issues, 835 Gunther was a small garage or basement fire. Upcoming items, 900 Duncan, commercial property opening as a convenience store. 901 Longacre, plans have been submitted and been approved for total rehab, and annual rental inspections for apartment complexes will continue to be scheduled. One thing I will note, I won't read through the total maintenance abatements, the department is quickly getting caught up on the rental inspections, there was a little bit of a backlog since losing our last code director. Those are quickly being caught up. The backlog has been cut in half just over the past week alone, so hopefully we will be fully caught up over the, over the next week. That's all the highlights, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Vice President Roelklaub.
In addition, I would like to just reiterate that I had a meeting with our borough manager, Mr. Cave, and we spoke about updating the codes and ordinances, and we're going to work diligently to make sure that we update at least two codes and ordinances a month.
Yeah, we're going to dig in them pretty aggressively.
Yes.
A lot of them need updating.
Yes.
As you know, Counselor Roelklaub, over the years, has been a pit bull on updating the, updating the codes and ordinances, so it's time, it's a matter of time, and let's get to work.
I would like to be a tiger.
Second. I want to start with the ordinance involving license, licenses, permits, and fees involving circulars, in addition to contractor licenses and permits and so forth and so on. So, those are the two ordinances that we're currently working on to update.
I was just going to say, if you could see from my perspective, Mr. Woolmack has not lifted his head up, his pen is running out of ink, somebody get that man a notebook. We see it happening, but thank you. Does that in the report?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Public Works.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My report was submitted and is as stand, does anybody have any questions?
Madam Chair, just one question, I just want to reiterate that Public Works is going to start the repainting in the street.
Correct.
Okay, in August.
August first.
August first.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Weather pending.
Okay.
Now, this oppressive heat, I cannot have the guys out there picking the streets, but weather pending, yes.
Of course, right.
Absolutely.
Right, all right, thank you very much. Do you have a...
I also have a question, in reference to the street cleaner, is that fixed and up and running, going back to its regular schedule?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Madam President, my reference to item, there is an updated signage in intersection of, and it's probably in the chief's report now that I think about it, don't block the box. Can you talk to the relevance of that and why it's needed?
The relevance of the do not block the box, the PennDOT actually put out the striping in the streets, now we added the signage, which actually will give the police department the right to ticket in them intersections, and I know Henry will speak of this, officers have been periodically scheduling in that intersection to ticket for do not block the box during peak hours. So, it's, it's in effect, the signs are there, you guys see the signs, and it's working.
Where's the signs located?
They're in Bailey and Church. At the intersection has one, each traffic lane has one.
Okay, I thought I seen one in front of the firehouse as well.
Yeah, is that the, that's the box, but where's the, I think they're talking about the sign.
Each intersection, as you travel north, south, east, and west, Bailey and Church, each intersection has a sign.
Right, so is that the same sign in front of the fire?
No, firehouse box is a whole different...
Okay, okay.
These are standing signs now.
Because I wasn't sure if you could enforce people not blocking the box in front of the firehouse as well, because if they have an emergency and there's traffic and they can't move.
They don't supposed to block that box either.
Right.
We'll double check, and I'll get back to you on that, absolutely.
Oh, whether it could be enforced.
Whether it could be enforced or not.
Right, that's the question, whether it could be enforced, that's why I ask. Okay, okay. All right.
We'll look into it for you.
Madam President, Counselor Johnson has a question.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Could there also be a block to block for Myra and Church Lane? There's constantly congestion.
So, there are signal upgrades that Megan spoke about there that may address some of that congestion, but we can, we can take that into consideration as well. All right. Thank you very much. Darren's your report? Thanks, we have our public safety, so we're moving on to our... Thanks. Uh we have our public safety, so we're moving on to our police department's report.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
The Yaden Police Department had 1,007, seven calls for service for the month of June. There were six criminal arrests in the month of June. There were six non-traffic citations issued in the month of June. And there were eight hundred and forty-eight tickets issued in the month, uh parking tickets issued in the month of June and eighty moving violations. And if I can, um can I ask for a consideration for counsel to reject the submitted police and borough towing proposals?
Madam President.
Vice President Roclow.
I would like to make a motion for counsel to reject the submitted police and borough towing pro, proposals.
Seconded.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question. Uh just to reiterate, the initial RFP was put out in May. We created a booting ordinance in June, well ratified or passed the booting ordinance in June and realized that our towing contract didn't reflect that information. So this is the reason why we're rejecting and accepting new bids. Um, any other questions? All right. Um can we move for a roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Did I say yet?
Yes.
I did. Next, sir.
Madam President, if I can ask counsel consideration to re-advertise and solicit RFPs with greater specifications for police and borough towing.
Madam President.
Vice President Roclow.
I would like to make a motion to re-advertise and solicit RFPs with greater specifications for police and borough towing.
Second.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question. Hearing none. Can we proceed with our roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, with, with, that was a yes? That vote is unanimous. The motion carries. Okay. So I'll go for the third one, because I did put it under the police, but it's not written in. At the beginning of the meeting, we voted to amend the agenda to include the appointment of our emergency management coordinator, um one uh Chief Henry Jamarko. And is there a motion? So moved.
Seconded.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question. None from you, sir.
Thanks, Tiger.
He couldn't wait. Uh can we proceed with the roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roclow.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That vote is unanimous. The motion carries. And I would like to report that Chief Jamarko does have a certificate or a degree or.
Master in emergency management.
Masters in emergency management. So perfect person for the job. Thanks for stepping up to the plate.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you. That ends my report.
Thanks so much. Uh any?
Just wanted to note that we'll work with the solicitor to do the appropriate paperwork to submit to the state pertaining to emergency management.
Sure. All right. Thank you very much. Do you have a representative from our fire department? Okay. And our emergency management report will come from Chief Jamarko. Next. Next time. So we may want to, may want to consider revising the order that they appear on our agenda since that guy's going to be up twice. Um and then next we do have recreation.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
I want to skip to uh read the report without my glasses, so.
Can't even find the mic.
It's one of the duties of emergency management.
Who said these meetings aren't fun?
You weren't 150 one year. I guess we put 150, 150 together. Well, good evening, counsel. Uh just want to briefly uh bring you up on the vegetable gardening program, uh Urban Roots. We started last uh Wednesday and uh we have 53 residents, mostly new residents that's tapping around. So the program is going great guns. It will go through the second week in November. So we'll have vegetables coming on a regular basis. Uh the next thing on the agenda was uh the YA basketball program is in its fourth week. Uh it should finish about the second week in August and we should be done with that. Uh the Eastern Delaware County Stormwater Coalition uh has put in a grant for more rain gardens and more uh composting workshops. Uh so that'll be coming through soon. We do have the money. So we'll make sure that Yaden is in the mix on that. Uh lastly, the community garden at uh Yaden Community Park is really, uh we have a lot of fruits and vegetables. Watermelon, uh corn, beets. Uh we also have eggplant. Uh it's unbelievable. So uh if you get a chance to come out on Saturdays between eight and 10 a.m., please come out and take a look. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. There are other glasses. Jeez, Chief. Okay. So without further ado, I'd like to uh thank everyone for coming out tonight. This meeting was all that I expected it to be. Um, and I'm thankful, I'm, I'm thankful that we were all here. I think we got the business of the borough done. Is.
Oh, you need um doggy bags for your pet. Uh there's some in the hallway. The Stormwater Coalition has provided us a lot of these. I ride around and I see people walking dogs. We just give them to them. So if you need, you need some, there's some in the hallway and I have plenty of them.